Major funding for this program was provided by Friends of Iowa Public Television.
Hello, I'm Diane Dillon Ridgely and I hosted a special program broadcast live by Iowa Public Television on February 17th, 1993. That program was titled Racism in Iowa and for three hours, a group of Iowans examined what racism is, how it is practiced in Iowa, how it hurts all of us, and what we can do about it. This tape is a portion of that special program, our town meeting in IPTV Studio 3. Given the rich resource of people we had gathered, we insisted that everyone address the issue at hand and get to the point. We began the discussion with a report about education created by Leanne Howe, Luis Lobo, and Anna Mindietta. But before it started, Leanne had a note to add. We join the town meeting with Leanne Howe.
I thought that there were some positive things to say about education. There's a I could have produced a film that was about a lot of negativism and instead we chose to look at students and administrators in our area of eastern Iowa. I found them to be very open and I hope that the students that you're about to see as well as the administrators, that it is very obvious that there are some good pockets of enlightenment going on in the communities of West Liberty and Iowa City.
Thank you. And now, a story that has no ending. Red and yellow, black and white, we are separate in his sight. Jesus loves the little children of the world. That's what I learned to sing on the playground 36 years ago.
The United States Bureau of Labor Statistics predicts that minorities and immigrants will hold 26% of our jobs by the year 2000. Further, the US Census Bureau estimates that while the Caucasian population in the country will grow by 25% between 1990 and 2030, during the same period, the African-American population will increase by 68%, the Asian-American, Pacific Island Americans, and American Indian populations by 79%, and the Hispanic population by 187%. In West Liberty, a town of approximately 3,000 in eastern Iowa, minority students represent almost 27% of the total student population in their school system, the highest figure in the state. 20% are Hispanic and 7% are Asian. At the turn of the century, Mexicans began moving to West Liberty and the population remained small and located in one area of town. After World War II and development of the Louis Rich Foods, the world's largest turkey processing products plant, the Hispanic population increased dramatically.
I think the greatest strain has been on myself reminding myself that I'm a minority only to my children, particularly Monica, my daughter, who happens to have darker skin like I do and you know, the last name stands out. And there's been times when she's felt a little bit of pressure, where she's reminded she's Hispanic, and then we have to talk about it.
"That girl is a nigger, that girl is a nigger." "I guess so," I replied, as the children chanted and ran a circle around me. I'd never heard that word before, so I asked my mother when I got home from first grade. She told me I was an Indian.
For years, the fundamental consensus in United States education was that there was no difference in teaching children of different races, religions, cultures, and economic backgrounds. With the increase of minority teachers in classrooms, this idea has had a greater impact on students.
Some of the students in the privacy of my office have spoken to me about one or two things that have made them uncomfortable, and I'm very sorry about that. Because I only know of rare but specific incidences, I try to deal with specifically with the student and the teacher.
Some misconceptions, I would say, especially about the Hispanics, which I'm more familiar with, will be Hispanics are lazy, they don't have the willingness to learn and go ahead and get a better future, and I think that's not true. Many times, what they need is encouragement, and they are afraid. Many times, they are afraid because they don't know what's out there. They have been taught or maybe conditioned to believe that they may not be accepted in this culture, and I think, once again, education is the key here.
This stereotype is just not in West Liberty, but I think it's throughout almost the whole country or the whole world, that every time when they see an Asian person with slanty eyes or black hair, they think we're Chinese. And I'm Laotian.
When I was in the third grade, my teacher asked me to stand up and tell the rest of the class about my grandmother, an Indian princess. It was show and tell week.
You know, I don't mind what color they are. I think women are equal, no matter if you're Laotian, black or white, you know, I think of you as equal, but if you treat me, you know, a different way, I'm gonna treat you a different way. That's the way I see it, you know. I mean, I wouldn't want to, but if a white person treats me, you know, lower than what he is, you know, trying to say that he's better than me, then I'm gonna try to treat him the same way or something, you know. I mean, I'll pay, I'll give him back for what he did to me.
Sometimes I feel like I don't fit in, and other times I feel like I'm just like them. But then whenever I don't feel like I fit in, I mean, I have someone around me to talk to.
Like many said, we are created equal and we should be treated the same, but there is racism, and I'm sure there always will be because they've been trying to stop it for so many years, and it just hasn't really stopped.
In Iowa City, the diversity existing at the University of Iowa has also allowed local schools to bring in more accurate perspectives in specific units of study. Here, the schools follow standards enforced by law and regulations, but students are also exposed to different points of view. Currently, almost 24% of the total student population at city and west high schools are minority students, with the largest group being of Asians, followed by African-Americans, Hispanics, and Native Americans. According to west high principal Jerry Argonbright, students appreciate the opportunity to learn about different cultures through their contact with people from different ethnic groups.
We talk a lot at west high school about the importance of diversity in teaching tolerance and acceptance of others, and our staff certainly sees that as a real strength in how we promote our instructional program to our students. We have, from our population of 1,100 students, we have 14% minority, and from that group, we have 60 kids who participate in English as a second language program. So here, we try to celebrate our diversity by promoting the differences that we have amongst ourselves as a stimulus for promoting understanding and acceptance of others.
30 years ago, when I was 12, things were getting more complicated and harder to understand. Even though I could pay, the other girls at summer school wouldn't let me ride in their cab. I walked and cried all the way home, and when I told my mother, she cried too.
20 years ago, the University of Iowa created the International Classroom Program, an outreach service provided by the Office of International Education and Services to help challenge American stereotypes about foreign and minority cultures. Today, the program is also co-sponsored by the College of Education with additional funding from the University of Iowa Credit Union. Lentlobati from Ethiopia is one of the many students in world at the University of Iowa who volunteer their time to the program. Each semester, more than 74 students lectured to children in eastern Iowa classrooms using themselves as living textbooks.
Very interesting questions. You'll be surprised, somebody in the university asked me if Africans still live on the tree, and I actually answered, "Yeah, we live on the tree, and actually your ambassador lives three trees down from mine." So imagine a student from university asks this kind of question, and the kids ask very interesting and sensible questions.
Dr. Steve Arum, Director of the Office of International Education and Services, and Xu Ching Hua, a graduate student from mainland China, see the International Classroom Program as a way to help dispel stereotypes about other cultures.
What I think it does is it provides students a chance to learn from people from other countries. Two different kinds of things. One is, I think, they learn how people have very much the same needs all over the world, but also, and much more important, since this is one of the goals of the office, they learn how are the different ways that people satisfy these needs.
Things were better when I was in high school. I had learned to use my mouth and fists. Some called me gut eater, skin, bitch, a nice girl. I had learned to lead a double life, but stories have no endings. This is one truth. If multiculturalism is to promote cultural awareness and sensitivity among all students, which will lead to the understanding and respect for one's own and other cultures, it has to be a cooperative effort between student and institution.
This program shows all the students, either the American students or the foreign students, that we are all human beings.
You are much better than them. So now, in this level, if you learn about Africa, when you're grown up, you know about the world, you know about different languages, ethnic group, and culture, your outlook will expand. You'll be very good people.
And now, it's your turn. I wonder if Judge, you would share with us some of the challenges that there are in terms of dealing with the issues of diversity in education in Iowa?
Well, there are a number of challenges, one being trying to come up with a staff that's diverse enough to provide the role models for the 400, almost 500,000 students we have in the public schools. We have a diverse population of approximately 6% in terms of student enrollment, but we only have about 1.4% of teachers in that group, and that's not enough to go around. And even in districts where we don't have minority students, we still need some minority role models because we know that we send our students to very diverse locations to work after they leave school and after they leave college. So we still need those role models, and that's one of the biggest challenges.
Thank you, Judge Brown. Would someone else like to add to that?
I think what Judge is saying is very true, and as we see, as we see the school districts today, we don't see that diversity there. And we talk about the high dropout rate that we have among the Hispanic population, and I think a lot is due to that, that we don't have those role models there. And you wonder why those role models are not there. In many cases, you have qualified people that could fit into those role models, but because of the indifference of the power structure of those districts, they don't fit in there.
What are some of the things that we could think to do to help facilitate making that match between those role models and those needs in those other districts? Yes?
I think we need to focus in, one, on the historical perspective, that in 1968, we had seven black youth from Tech High School and variety of other schools bring the school board to North High School and talk about black history. We talked about teachers and not having a strong enough union. We talked about role models in the school. That was in 1968. Those things were being implemented at that time. There was no continuation with that, you know, and today, now, we're talking about the exact same thing, but without substance. We're trying to put the cart before the horse. And if we focus in on the historical perspective and start educating not only the educators, but the youth into actual cultural diversity and not gloss it over, then we'll begin establishing true role models.
Well, I think the other thing we should consider, building on the last statement, is the whole issue of curriculum development. I think we need to move beyond multicultural courses and really move into the traditional areas of the curriculum and integrate all aspects to develop the kind of awareness that I think, you know, will create understanding in a more neutral kind of a way, and to reflect all of our different histories, our cultures, et cetera. Okay. Yes?
Yes, I would just like to point out that not everyone was invited to take part, at least on the discussion onstage. We're talking about the education of our youth, and yet I don't see anybody under the age of 30 on the stage. And in fact, I would challenge those who are on the stage. We have a number of youth in the audience, and I would challenge you to invite some of the youth from the audience to join you in this discussion onstage. If you're really serious about finding solutions, it is essential that the youth be heard, that their viewpoint and their endpoint, their input, excuse me, be heard.
Yes, and by all means, please take advantage of the mic.
The issue on Hispanic Americans and their necessity to promote education is one that's, with several individuals up on your panel, is a very concerned effort. And I think, as we move in a positive progress towards this educational goal for Hispanic Americans, that this type of forum is definitely needed.
You raise a point about Hispanic Americans, and we need to talk about all the issues of diversity and bigotry, and also the aspects of religious bigotry that happen to take place as well in the state. I wondered if someone would like to add to this discussion, but what can we do to help majority members of the Iowa population contribute on this? Yes?
We are all in this together. We are the United States of America. We are not an island anymore. We are the world itself. If we want to survive, we have to really believe that diversity is a strength, and diversity is also an asset to our country for us to go on to be the greatest nation on earth.
Okay. You wanted to say something? Yes, right here?
I think as far as role models go and what we can do for the white majority in this state, there's another kind of role model that doesn't often get mentioned, and that is the white teacher, since we mostly deal with white students, can set an example of one who believes that racism is wrong. And I try and make it okay for my kids to say racism is wrong. I think more of that needs to happen.
Okay. Anyone else?
Yes. It's nice to talk about things that we should do, but that should have occurred 20 years ago, all right? Many of these things you're talking about right now should be in place right now. The question should be, why are not in place right now? That's the real important question. Take Sioux City, Iowa, where I'm from. Right now, our Sioux City School Board is not going to desegregate the schools in violation of federal law. That's a very extremely important issue. It's the first time the federal government has stepped in in the last 20 years, in any place in the country. It occurs in Sioux City, Iowa. That's an important issue, is why will they not address the public school issue? Why will they not address the public busing issue? The majority population, the American Indian populations, the black community, the Hispanic community must somehow come to some conclusions about drawing a busing plan together. That's going to be delivered to the school system so they can accept it, and the federal government can accept it. Those are current issues right now. Platitude's are nice, but let's talk about issues of what's happening right now, not things that should be happening in the future. Those things should have been happening in the last 20 years. So let's talk about issues.
Okay. Go ahead. Ron?
Well, I'm an advocate of constructive confrontation, and that's what's missing, some constructive confrontation. And confrontation can be either antagonistic or non-antagonistic, but I think at the most, we should start engaging each other. I think there's been a real failure of leadership amongst us, engaging each other. We have become comfortable with our friends and our circle and our group, and we do not stand out and speak up against things that are not right, even within the black community, Hispanic community, white community. It's easy to throw the ball at the majority of community, but I think we have all failed in keeping a, what I call, a healthy edge, creative confrontation on these issues. I'm very concerned about the young people because I think we failed to have intergenerational transfer of what we all fought about in the 60s and 70s about cooperating. We're going backwards, and we have a mentality among all of us of a "them is not us" point of view. I think we need to correct that, and I think there's talk for some real effective leadership. This is a beginning.
Good, thank you. Yes?
I have two questions for you, lady and gentleman. The first question I want to ask, is racism prevalent in the school? The second question, to what effect does the economy have affect on the racism tension in Iowa?
Okay. Actually, there's a whole section on the economy that we'll touch on, unless someone wants to give the first question an answer right now.
I think that we will find racism everywhere, and the schools are part of everywhere. So we are living in a racist society, and what I want to draw attention to is the reason why it is a racist society. We cannot look at a symptom that manifests itself in the leaf on a branch and say, "We'll cut off that leaf," without paying attention to where it's coming from. The root is diseased, and I think that's where we need to focus ourselves. 30 years ago, perhaps, discussions like this, I'm not trying to belittle the discussion, but discussions like this took place. We had confrontations 30 years ago. The point is that we are 30 years later, and I think we need to learn the lessons of our own experience. And I'm talking now about a generation, my generation, who have lived through that 30 years ago, and are still talking about the leaves on branches and not trying to focus on the root cause of the problem. Racism is a manifestation of a problem, as is sexism, et cetera, et cetera. I think we need to focus on the root, you know. So I don't want to break up the thing in terms of going to another topic, but I think that we should focus on that, and yes, we recognize the symptoms, but let's get to the disease.
Okay, thank you. I know our time is short on all of these, and we want to spark discussion for everyone. Now, we'd like to move the discussion to the area of economics. This story was created by Iowa Public Television producer Pat Oswald.
When I was asked to create a story exploring the issue of racism as it relates to economics in eight minutes, I was at first overwhelmed. The subject is incredibly complex, and it deserves in-depth treatment. Rather than concentrate on the undeniable negatives such as poverty, glass ceilings, dead-end jobs, the issue of equal pay for equal work, and prejudice in the workplace, I thought that the subject might be better served in this limited amount of time by focusing on three individuals who, for a variety of reasons, have achieved some economic success. They are not typical. My hope is that their stories will reflect a glimmer of what's right about our world and the potential we all possess towards changing what's wrong.
I always felt that when I got to the age where I didn't need to go to school or either graduated, whichever came first, I would end up being a laborer the rest of my life, and that's the way it was, you know.
For Terry Crossbear, opening the Blue Feather Gift Emporium in downtown Des Moines was the only alternative to the low-wage jobs available to him in the mainstream economy.
I call them corporate slavery positions. You know, you get in a corner here and they tell you to do this all day for $5 an hour, and so you do it, and it gets, not only does it get boring, you know, it gets frustrating after receiving those little checks that you just got enough to buy the food and pay the rent with, and other than that, you know, you're not really accomplishing anything that you feel good about.
Born and raised in Kansas, he attended four high schools in four years.
Immediately after I finished my 12 years of high school, I was a non-graduate, so I chose to enlist in the US Army on my 18th birthday. When I came out of the service, I worked for a couple of construction companies, and my cousin has his own roofing business, and I worked with him for quite a while. In 1980, I went to Chicago, and it was there that I decided to go to a business school, and I graduated from there as a computer operator. And as soon as I got out of there, I got a job for the American Indian Center in Chicago, and I worked there a couple of years as a finance director. I learned quite a bit about social service agencies. I learned a lot about local, state, and federal government through my own eyes. I was able to get a better understanding and a better view of our society and what the Indian people can do if they put their mind to it, and then what they're up against.
In spite of a personal and family history marred by the effects of alcoholism, each day is a reaffirmation of his desire to succeed.
And I feel very fortunate to have been taught not only how to work, but also how to adapt to my best ability in today's society, and yet retain the traditional culture and belief that I still practice today.
Being brought up in the 60s, I really have no real concept of being able, being having to go to the back door of a restaurant to eat a hamburger or to drink at a different water fountain, or, you know, all those things, you know, were insulated from me, you know, by my parents, because they knew that as a child, they needed to keep me focused and to give me the morals and values. And then when these type of things confronted me, you know, because it's not a question of if they would confront me, but when they confronted me, that I would have a basic understanding for that, and I would have an idea on how to deal with it. Keeping his eye on the prize has brought its reward for Marcus Weems. At the age of 32, he's the president of a successful Waterloo Insurance Agency. The advantage that I really feel that I had was that there were special people that took a special interest in nurturing my growth, and from the very beginning, they were telling me that I could be somebody, and to even go further than that, they told me that I was somebody already. After attending college at the University of Northern Iowa and the all-black Russ College in Holly Springs, Mississippi, he worked on the political campaigns of Senator Charles Grassley and Congressman Cooper Evans. These were people that took me in, they embraced me. You know, they didn't say, "Okay, this is affirmative action," or "this is this." They brought me in, and they worked with me to help me master my skills. I was treated like any other person in the office, but I also knew by being treated like every other person in the office that I was equal, that they looked at me as equal. That opportunity was followed by spending the next few years learning the insurance business in a program designed to assist minorities in developing clients. Since I've been at this agency, they've done everything they could do to help me. It hasn't been a situation where we'll put you over here and you be quiet. Such is not the case. You know, they want me to grow. They want everything from me that I want for myself. I want to be successful, and they want me to be successful.
When we were in Laos, you know, talking about coming to the United States, it's real hard. You have to spend a lot of money to come to this country.
Over 10% of the population of Storm Lake is comprised of Southeast Asians. IBP is the reason many of these new immigrants have moved to the seat of Buena Vista County. One of those is Barry Tong Van, who arrived in Des Moines as a refugee in 1976.
And when I first came to Des Moines, I worked, you know, I don't care what kind of job, you know, I have to do, because I have my parents waiting for my support. I have two kids, and, you know, I couldn't afford to go back to school or anything like that, so I decided to do whatever they have for me to do.
Trained as a schoolteacher in Laos, he took a job in Des Moines as a janitor before moving to Storm Lake in 1977. For the next six years, he was a custodian with the Storm Lake School System, each month sending over $100 of his paycheck to the refugee camp in Thailand that held the rest of his family.
If I want to go back to school, I could, but thinking about the life of my sister, my brothers, and because I'm older, brothers of the family of nine kids, I have to support them, and I have to work hard to get the money, to send them every month, and also I have two sons that need to, you know, take care of.
With house payments and a growing family, a packing plant job became the next opportunity.
When I first got to IBP, I was working the line. When I first got to IBP, I was working the line. I seemed to not too like it, too different taste, you know? I like to learn some more because of some more skills, some more job. That's in 1983, that's I got my job at IBP. And I worked on Kial floor for five years. And in 1988, they promoted me as a trainer, language trainer, to help the lotion, you know, because we have more and more and more lotion coming to work at the packing plant. To me, the most important thing, number one, I feel, you know, I feel proud of myself that I can help people out, you know, in the community here. And second thing, I can feel, you know, proud of my kids that they have education and they want to go to, they go to the college.
The pursuit of the American dream is seen as a fundamental human right. However, for many Iowans, access to economic opportunity remains a dream deferred.
The 1990 census indicated that there were a little over eleven percent of the state's population living in poverty. And in general, the economic circumstances of minorities has not appreciably improved over the last many years. You still see extraordinarily high percentages of unemployment among young black males. And certainly, that represents some kind of structural or institutionalized bias that occurs through the educational and economic systems that we all participate in.
In the last few years, we've noticed that there's been an increase in the incidence of hate crimes and other acts of bigoted violence. And they seem to rise always in communities as economic times get harder. And as we all know, in this country as well as in Iowa, we've experienced some serious economic times. I wondered if Senator Rosenberg, you might offer some comments to us on how those two things collide? And what are the kinds of things we can do to begin to impact on that?
Well, first, when you deal with crossburnings or other instances of bigotry and tolerance, I mean, the entire community has to speak out against it. And it doesn't matter whether you're in economic good times or whether you're in hard times, the entire community, whether you're in the majority of the community, the minority of the community, has simultaneously erupt in protest and outrage. When you look at economic times, it's certainly when during economic tough times, there's a greater demonstration of it. I think you see more of it. I don't know whether or not you have worse racism. I think the racism may always be there. In economic hard times, it may bring it out, it may become more visible. A person who is white without a job may suddenly start pointing to people who aren't white and say, "They're the fault, they're the cause." But I'm not sure that we should think only in economic tough times does racism become more acute.
Okay. It seems like we're not speaking out and talking about and objecting to it. Yes?
One of the things I think helps support the bigotry that can exist are some subtle things that need to be addressed. And one of those for the American Indian community is the use of mascots that represent American Indian people. Those mascots do a lot to perpetuate the negativism, the subtle negativism that occurs in any community. During the school year, during the football, basketball season, we have weekends filled with students yelling obscenities, more or less, at other students in the name of school spirit that say, "Kill the Indians," or "Whack the Warriors," or "Beat the Braves." And we condone it, we promote it because of school spirit. And it's like when we have the kids walk through that door, we say, "We're going to throw out all this stuff we've been trying to deal with on respecting diversity of cultures and in the name of school spirit. It's okay to say all these bad things about other people." And in this case, in a lot of communities, it is Indian people who are the victims of that, even if they're not present, merely by the presence of their name or part of their tradition or culture attached as a team mascot.
Okay. Yes?
Besides the economic hardship, I think there's a climate in a country that allows certain things to happen. During the Democratic administrations, during certain people's tenures as politicians or as our leaders, there are certain behaviors that are absolutely not acceptable, where through the tenure of some other people, those same behaviors are not punished, the laws are not enforced. And I think we have to be very careful that we speak up so that certain laws are enforced so that there's a certain good living for everybody. And you can see in a university, we will, that will accept a racial epithet, where another university may dismiss a student for the same epithet. It depends on the leadership of our leaders and ourselves that elect them.
Okay. Lieutenant Governor Corning, I know you've been a strong voice on the issues of hate crime and bias and working with the task force. Do you think that we are speaking out enough? Why does it seem like it's so hard for us to get lots of numbers of people to speak out on these issues?
I think maybe we're complacent, that we're apt to say, "Well, I'm not prejudiced. It doesn't happen in my school." I would like to know, when this man over here said that we deal with symptoms and that we're not dealing with the root causes, I would like to know what you mean by the root causes and what would be your suggestions?
The point is that we live in a society in which some people in the society benefit from hate, benefit from oppression, benefit from racism, and so on. If we focus our attention on simply the symptom, then these culprits get off the hook. And in this culture, one of the things that we find all around us is that what remains of the crudest racism lingers among the people who really don't benefit from it anymore. It has become part of the culture of the working classes. And then those who benefit pull themselves out and point fingers and say, "It is those lowlifes who are the racists." But we are now sophisticated, and we are now, we will now have people from Southeast Asia come with us. We will, I'm not making any aspersions to the people who do sponsor, I mean, please understand me. We will now be involved in civil rights movements and so on because they may have shifted the focus of their exploitative and oppressive drive. So, if we are to deal with these problems, we have to go beyond simply race. We have to see race as one of the many social relations that reflect the oppressive and exploitative nature of the society we live in. We have, in other words, to confront capitalism. We have to. And I think that already, I mean, the most enlightened people in capitalist society recognize this. And they are trying to find ways around it, they're trying to reform and modify it. I think that collectively, we have to address it. Something has to be done, not just in terms of dealing with race and so on, but in terms of dealing with our very life on the planet.
Okay. Thank you. Rusty wanted to add something to that.
Well, for me, as I listen to the discussion and I think about economics, one of the things that I'm concerned about is that we talk about the economic hard times in people of color communities. And in fact, we see then that as the problem, when in fact, the problem is the very capitalistic system that breeds racism in our society. And I think we have to look at the infrastructures of our institution because we need to remember that slavery was based on economics. And that is how that was introduced to this country. So when we talk about the symptom, we see these disenfranchised people in poor neighborhoods. That is a symptom of the problem. But the root of racism is always economic. And I think we should not forget that.
Okay. I'm going to go to the audience first, then back to Mohammed.
I think a very interesting question was raised on the question of what is the root cause. Because I believe that if we will focus ourselves on individual racism, then we have already missed the picture. Individually, racism has nothing to do with a total picture because what a person feel has absolutely no weight unless, of course, they're in a position where they have power to do something about what they feel. So we're just talking about people running around with some kind of attitude about people because of color, because of where they come from, then we have missed the boat. Until we begin to focus in on racism as a problem that is blanketed in our government in terms of the federal, the state, the city, the county, and whatever else, then we've already missed the boat. Because it's through that type of institutionalized racism that manifests itself in economics, education, and any place else that you would like to choose to go to. I have to agree with this person when you say that this system was set up on a system of usury in terms of slavery. But what was behind the system of slavery was a system of drugs, which is the same system that we're dealing with today, a system of influence, usury, rape, gambling, and speculation. And if we are going to get to the root cause of racism in this country, then we have to do with Dr. King, Malcolm X, and many folks who've come before us done. And that is went back to that Constitution and insisted upon constitutional law, not only within the government, but within ourselves. Because it's when we get back to constitutional law that we begin to deal with all the individual problems that exist within this country.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Mohammed?
There's a great number of problems in the country, and I think economics plays a very important part. One of the things I would like to point out is that as a member of a minority community, we have lost what we used to have, say, a hundred years ago, that entrepreneurial spirit. And we're losing our young men and our young women because jobs are not available, and we look to someone else to create those jobs. I think we need to get back and begin to create the jobs ourselves. The state is taking some initiative with the Targeted Small Business Program, and also the state and the city have joined forces to, for a minority business center or any city business center that is looking just at economic development in the communities. And I think we need to get busy and get back that entrepreneurial spirit and go to work and begin to build jobs ourselves. We live in a global economy, and we need to take some part in that global economy. We can't just say, "It's somebody else's fault, we have to do it ourselves."
Ron, and then...
In defense of capitalism, let me say the following. You don't have to look too far to certain socialistic or totalitarian regimes to see the same type of racism, ethnic purity going on. So, I don't want to put all at the door on a step of capitalism. I think it's a lot deeper than that, and it's not as simplistic as that. So I think that looking across comparatively, across various types of government and forms, you still have racism, whether it's in Africa, whether it's in Asia, whether it's in Europe or the United States. And we need to look at it more broadly. We just need greater leadership, be true to our convictions. I like the constitutional reference because that is a basis of legal authority that we can all, under a common umbrella of legal laws, you know, work on it. And I think that's a more appropriate approach to do.
Judy?
We've talked a little bit about the roots of racism, and we keep going back to economics and whatever. We've got to get back to what we're talking about is with the roots of racism. Roots of racism starts at the very basis of what this country was established on, and it was established on racism. And you talk about, in a Bill of Rights, it talks about the pursuit of liberty, happiness, and all the rest. That was okay for all people, is the way it was stated. But in 1971, Indian people were not considered as people in the Bill of Rights. We are not addressing what's going on. Our roots are in the establishment of this very nation, in the Constitution, in our education systems. It's never taught that the Constitution is based on the Constitution of the Iroquois people. You never hear that. The children are not taught the truth in education. Our roots have to go back to where the basis is, and that's education. And until we get racism out of what we're teaching every day in our children, K through 12, and all through the upper education systems, racism is not going to change because we're teaching it every day to our children. There's the roots. Get to it and cut the roots before racism's going to change in this country. Face it, it hurts. Racism is painful.
Yes. Yes.
We were all gathered here because we all, I think we all believe there is racism in Iowa. I think as we united here, we should get together and get to know our neighbors and then teach our kids. We need to teach our youth. These are our future. They're the ones that are going to educate their kids. We was, it's just like when I was in grade school, I got tough because they treated me that way. Kids didn't want to sit next to me because of my color. They thought I was, that I was, that I stank, okay? They didn't want to sit next to me. That's how I learned to be a racist myself. I started hating white kids and then learned on my own. I got tough, and then I started going out and treating people the way they were treating me. We need to nip it in the butt. We need to start now. We've got to quit talking about it and do something.
Okay. The audience, please.
Yes, one of the best ways you can deal with racism is to call a racist, a racist. And that's why I was shocked when I was sitting here watching that video a few minutes ago. There are employers in this state who use oppression, who use racism to make a great deal of money. And until people like the people in this building begin holding those people accountable for what they do, nothing's going to change. As long as those people set the standard, as long as there's people who are making a great deal of money off the oppression of other people in this state, nothing's going to change. And other businesses and people who have some wealth have got to be on the front lines doing that.
The discussion was going so well during our live broadcast, we decided to omit a couple of our field reports. We're reinstating them now with a disclaimer. While we omitted the stories, people still talked about the issues. The discussion may sometimes seem redundant, but then some things bear repeating. So, now we turn to a report produced by Robert Morris on the criminal justice system.
Hello, I'm Robert Morris. In 1917, my grandfather, James B. Morris Sr., became the twenty-seventh African-American admitted to the Iowa bar. Seventy-six years later, the accomplishments of JB's generation seem minor in light of the devastating racial problems facing our society today.
A major issue facing our state and nation as we move towards the end of the century is crime. More specifically, the criminal justice system and its impact on our society in terms of both effectiveness and fairness. An ongoing criticism of the criminal justice system is that it is unfair in its treatment of racial minorities. Responding to this criticism, the Iowa Supreme Court established an Equity in the Courts Task Force last year to study various aspects of the criminal justice system and its impact on racial minorities. In terms of the system's impact, the statistics contained in a recently released report are staggering. One particularly devastating statistic was that twenty-two percent of Iowa's prisoners are African-Americans compared to a 1.46% state population, although prison officials are quick to air that many inmates are not Iowa natives. Another is that nationally, forty-six percent of all federal and state prisoners are black, according to Justice Department statistics. University of Northern Iowa Professor Keith Crewe authored the report.
The report came about as part of a larger examination of race and gender issues in the state of Iowa's legal system. It was sponsored by a task force on legal equality, which was created by the Iowa Supreme Court two years ago to look into questions of race and gender bias. I think there are a number of members of the legal system who probably expected even worse findings than we got, whereas others will tend to downplay the findings and rationalize them away. So, I predict the response will be mixed.
The task force report maintains that racial minority underrepresentation in jury selection could have a potentially disparate impact for black defendants and recommends mandatory judicial guidelines.
If I had a problem with the total number of blacks who were available for the jury pool, and I wanted to increase the number of blacks, not only on the source list, but on the master list, because that's the key, because that's the list from which all divisions are made, what I might do is simply go to an organization that is predominantly black.
Minorities are obviously underrepresented in the jury panels here in Polk County. I don't know what the answer is, but there's a definite inequity. It's, you know, blacks and Hispanics are rare, in my experience, and I try a lot of cases.
Other areas cited in the task force report as discriminatory towards racial minorities in Iowa include the setting of bail, pre-trial release, and juvenile detention, for which the task force again recommends mandatory guidelines.
You'll find in the jails right now that before a trial, that there are more blacks that are held because they cannot make bond. And this shouldn't be. You're not punishing a person before he's found guilty, and this what it does, in fact, do, does is it really holds them in jail there before they're even tried or convicted. I'm always concerned that young black males are transferred from the juvenile system to the adult court. And of course, then they got a record and frequently are imprisoned.
I get you back to the types of crimes that people commit or are accused I get you back to the types of crimes that people commit or are accused of committing. The things that will get a young black person detained are usually crimes where there's simply no other way of controlling them.
When you first get involved in the system in the state of Iowa as a juvenile, which a lot of young blacks tend to do because of economic problems, which we know that's the source of most of our troubles with the criminal justice system, blacks don't get into these diversionary programs. It generally goes to the upper class or middle-class white. So the system kind of builds on itself, and the failure of the system that starts way back when this juvenile was a kid ends up creating problems for him as he gets, becomes 21, 22. By the time he's 27, 28, has three or four felonies under his belt, and he's labeled a career criminal.
Some of the participants in the Task Force report characterized Iowa's public defender system as overworked and underexperienced, and commented that this resulted in frequent plea bargains and incarcerations.
People have a perception that if you work for the government, or if they hire an individual, not hire an individual, if the government gives them something, it can't be worth a whole lot. I know people within the public defender system that are very good lawyers, but I also know that they have young lawyers that are handling tough cases and doing pleas that, of cases that should not be pled out, pled out. These cases should not be done, they should go to trial.
We have an office of 17 people, 10 lawyers. We have a caseload of approximately 6,000 cases a year, and that's counting the case, not necessarily the client, a person with three or four charges. We track the charges rather than the individual. I don't believe that the stereotype that the public defender is overworked and the caseload is excessive, and therefore, there's an incentive to plead people guilty applies to our office.
If we're going to have effective representation for people who are facing criminal charges, we ought to do more than we've done in the past in terms of putting money and resources into the public defenders' offices.
The Task Force report also concluded that the root of many of the court system's problems with racial minorities starts at the police suspect arrest level. Both Black Hawk and Polk Counties have witnessed major police-black community controversies in past years.
I don't think that, that a sizable number of police officers, law enforcement officers in this area, the state at least, treat people differently on the basis of race.
The sentencing guidelines have been very harsh on blacks, and it's reflected in the number of blacks in the prisons. Certainly, we want to rid our communities of drugs, but we want the enforcement, law enforcement, to be on an even basis.
In light of the Task Force report and the changing demographics of Iowa's population, the issue of racial minorities in the criminal justice system will have a tremendous impact on our society.
I know that the issue of racism in the criminal justice system is not going to go away. People are angry and upset about it, and so I hope the, this study serves as some warning. If the trends in this study continue to be the way things happen in the criminal justice system, you will see the disproportionate over-representation of minorities in the prison system continue to increase.
America has lost and is losing the most precious item we have, and that is the children, the youth of this country.
If there's disparity, it has to be cleared up. If there's racism built into the structure, it has to be eradicated. But I have no problem whatsoever with having strong and efficient law enforcement, as long as it's fair.
Specifically on criminal justice, I wonder if Mary Ritchie would have something that she would want to contribute to this, particularly since there was a study last year that found that there is such disparity in the way people are handled in the criminal justice system.
Last week, perhaps some of you read about the release of a report that was commissioned by the Iowa Supreme Court, who appointed a task force of 29 individuals, 29 Iowans. And the report very carefully documented the criminal, the process used in the criminal justice system in Iowa. And I should tell you all that I'm one of the five non-legal people who served on that committee, so I'll tell you what it meant to me as a woman who has experienced discrimination, and how the findings, I think, relate not only to the people in this room, but to Iowans. There were four, the four most populous counties were chosen, and criminal cases were documented and then tabulated by the University of Northern Iowa and a professor of sociology, Dr. Keith Crew, who I believe would have been on one of those segments that we're not going to see. But the bottom line is that there is disparity in those, the handling of those cases from sentencing, pre-sentencing, to, pre-charging to sentencing, and there is a disparity, the percentage is up to 10%, where, when all the variables were backed out so that the cases could be considered on a similar basis, and it's called a regressive analysis. When that occurred, there was still an unexplained disparity of as much as 10% in Black Hawk County, in a difference between a white and a non-white is sentenced. And this was of particular concern because in our prison system, we have about 20% of the population that's minority, yet our adult population in this state is under 2%. So that unexplained disparity can only be attributed to racism.
Okay.
And now that we know that, we can in turn follow that system, continue to collect the data, and I'm hoping that not only the Supreme Court, but all those involved in the justice system understand that fairness and equity is where we, is what we expect from our court system, and it must be remedied.
Thank you. Perhaps Chief Mulder would like to contribute something specifically on this issue.
One of the things that I think we have to deal with in law enforcement in particular is, is the accusation that law enforcement practices racism. And one of the things I'd have to say right up front is, is law enforcement racist? Yeah, probably is. And why is that? And that's because law enforcement, if we do it as we say we're going to do it in Iowa, it reflects our society. Now, if law enforcement was, if our society was not racist, we wouldn't be here tonight, we'd be watching Masterpiece Theater. So, yeah, I would expect that you would find racism in law enforcement.
So what, but what do we do about it? We keep identifying the pieces, and we keep identifying the issues, but how do we begin to break that down?
Well, as I was starting to say, in law enforcement, I think it's a unique segment. It's very visible. We wear the uniforms out there so you can see us, and we see what we do a lot. The news media follows us around a lot to document what we do. We're in a position where we are on the cutting edge, we're on the leading edge of what happens in our society, on change in our society. And I think as you look at what we do, particularly in the city of Des Moines, we're beginning to focus, and have been for a couple of years now, beginning to focus on the things that we have in common in the neighborhood groups. We focus on the things that we all agree on. We ought to have good quality of life, we ought to have a crime-free neighborhood. Starting from the things that we have in common and building on those as the foundation, I think begins to make racism a non-issue. It moves it aside. Dr. Pope was saying earlier, differences just are, and I agree with that. But one of the things that I've found that doesn't matter with it, what race the person is that I'm talking to, they want to have a good quality of life, they want to be crime-free, they want to go outside their home and walk the street without having any concern over criminals. That's where I think, at least from a law enforcement, criminal justice perspective, we do something significant.
Earlier, it was mentioned that elements of racism or racial slurs tend to come up during times of economic downturns. Now, I represent the Miskwaki tribe located in central Iowa, and almost overnight, the tribe became one of the largest employers in Tama County. And I know the thing that we're coming across now is we are essentially in an upturn. And what we have encountered is an upturn also in comments to our people in terms of Indians don't pay taxes, taxation issues. Those elements are starting to come out, which we are facing, so either way you go, seems like racism comes up either direction you go, whether it's a downturn or upturn.
Okay. I wanted to stay with criminal justice a little longer, but that wasn't your comment, so go ahead.
My comment is, I guess, a sense of hopefulness in that I see in recent years the concept of diversity being heralded. In all the years that I grew up and experienced the issues of racism, it was put down as something that we should ignore, ignore people's differences, make believe they don't exist, everyone is the same. And of course, that's not the case. We are different, and I think once we identify, recognize, and herald the differences, then we'll have to confront them, and that will make it easier. It will never be easy, but I think as racial slurs are apparent, it is necessary for everyone to comment on them and abhor them. But again, I think the hope is, if you recognize that people are different and celebrate the differences, then you can deal with each and every incidence in which some of those differences are put down as a negative. I have to try to end on a hopeful note.
Commission a week? Yes.
Diane, I'd like to go back to the, to the question you posed to Chief Mulder about what do we do about, about racism in the law enforcement community? And I think the solution for us is, is very much like the one that, that Judge posed for the education system a few minutes ago, and that is to achieve some greater diversity in the force that provides the law enforcement. Because at this point, if we look across the board at law enforcement in the state of Iowa, we don't reflect in many places that level of diversity. And we will not, as a law enforcement community, achieve the kind of understanding and empathy that we need to have until we achieve that level of diversity within our own community.
Okay. I'm going to take an audience question, okay?
I would like to digress for a moment and go back to the issue of hate crimes and racial tensions that promote themselves within communities. I am a black United Methodist pastor in a small rural all-white community. I went to this small town in June of 1990, and I concur 100% with the Senator in that we, as a people, have to stand up and speak out against racism in all forms, whether it's in the criminal justice system, whether it's in any other form. And I began to receive hate phone calls, and I became very afraid to live in this small community, and there's, it's a community of 305 people. It's called Rippey, Iowa, seven miles north of Perry. And in November, we had 250 people stand up and denounce racism, the entire community, not only the United Methodist Church, the Catholic Church, the Presbyterian Church from surrounding towns of Grand Junction and Jefferson. And so we, if we are going to do anything, we have to be willing to stand up. And, you know, inside these walls, everybody in here is here for a one common purpose, we're against racism. But when we leave this building and get outside these walls, we are going to encounter on a daily basis people who are not speaking out against racism.
I think that's your point. I hate to have to cut you off, but our time is short, and I think that's your point about making sure that we stand up against these things. Louise?
Okay, I want to say that we all know that there is racism, whether it be law enforcement or any organization, educational, so forth and so on. And I guess the thing we're not, I guess, really explaining or talking about is what stops us? What are we so afraid of about standing up? I know for me, there is fear out there. I've spoken up at places, I've gotten phone calls from time to time, and I've gotten attacked. People in organization and leadership roles that could help and could come together with all of us, what's happening? Why isn't it, why aren't people standing up to talk about these things? I know it sounds so simple, and it's not, because it is very threatening, and it is very fearful. I know, I have babies at home, and it scares the hell out of me when I'm out, and I'm, and I speak out, and I do this often, and then I wonder, will something happen to my babies? And how could anybody hurt them, being so innocent, because of things that I've said and stood up? Because I want the society to change. When are we going to start stopping this fear of standing up?
So we've identified fear, we've identified some of the other factors, but we need to continue to push to, what are the things we can start doing to stop this?
The people on this platform, the majority of us are people of color. We need to come together as oppressed people and storm whatever citadel's we have to and make people accountable for what they're doing to our children. We talk about racism in the schools. I'm from Dubuque, Iowa. There's one maybe African-American or Asian or what-have-you child in ninth grade. It's nigger all day long, or it's spic, or it's something else, and it's ignored by the teachers. So this is what we have to do. We have to make those people accountable for our children. We have to make them responsible for the safety and well-being of our young people, wherever they are. We can't do it by ourselves, and, you know, the African-Americans can't do it, because if we could, we would have had the job done. The Japanese, Chinese, and whatever, they can't do it alone. We have to get together, people, and stop fighting each other.
It's true, it's true.
I would like to tell you what I wish would happen. A year ago, we formed a committee at the state level, which is called the Lieutenant Governor's Committee on Diversity. And on that committee, we have representatives of various racial and ethnic groups, business, labor, education, churches, and we have been meeting and talking for a year, and in fact, this program tonight is part of our effort to combat racism. What I want this program to do, and what I want all of us to do, is to go back to our communities and form committees of people, of all, of business, of labor, of, of all the different racial and ethnic groups, and to get some action. That's where it happens, I think, in our communities. We can all talk here, but we need to get together and communicate and learn about each other. And in fact, that's one of the things that we need on, on the committee that I chair, is, is to learn more about each other. So I'm, I guess I would like to, to give a challenge to all of you and say that this is a call for action. Do something.
Okay, yes.
That's a good challenge, but I think a bigger challenge is to look within ourselves, within our hearts, and ask ourselves, and all the TV people that are looking in, for them to look at themselves and look within themselves, why can't I accept my brother or my sister? Is it because I don't accept Christ? Is it because I want to be indifferent? We can make all the excuses we want, and we can, and we can point the finger at economics, and we can point the finger at education, but the bottom line is, the book of knowledge, the book of life tells you why you have the problems that you have in the world today. And it's pretty simple.
Okay.
You can't accept each other because you don't accept Jesus Christ.
Leann?
I don't know about the rest of y'all, but I kind of feel like we're wasting our time. And I admire what the Lieutenant Governor has said, but I think in most instances, that the dominant culture expects, if you talk about it enough, the problems will be solved, if we just talk about it. And that's not where it's happening. By getting together with your group of people and talking about it, that's admirable, but then I guess what kind of programs are you instituting around the state to, to help economically distressed areas? What is the government doing? The idea that minority people have to constantly go out and educate the dominant culture is, is absolutely unacceptable. And I, I'm sick of hearing about it. You know, this is what we do. I know a lot of us are educators, but I guess what, what, what's going on, other than just a lot of talk?
Okay.
I have to agree.
I have to agree with what she just said. I have a concern about the lip service that we provide here this evening. But I think, if you've been involved in your communities anywhere around, you see today a systematic dismantling of anything that had occurred in the past, which says that we're not serious about what the future is. We do not have leaders today who have a vision that sees me and my children in that future. That's what bothers me. That's what we have to do. The government needs to provide leadership that says, what's real is that it's not black, white, or green. I mean, black, white, and all the colors. What's real seems to be what's green. And if economic makes it, then that's what we follow. That has to change. And we don't focus enough on what the needs are for children.
I think a lot of opportunity for discussion here tonight. But I think the Lieutenant Governor's made an excellent point about it being time for action. This is a call to action, and that's why we're here tonight, not just to talk. But so that we can, in fact, begin to decide what it is we're going to do, and then do it. I work for the AFL-CIO, and there have been lots of great movements in this country. There are movements of people. There are always movements of people. Whether it's the civil rights movement, or whether it's the women's movement, or whether it's the labor movement. And we have links in that chain, in fact, that tie us together. We have Tom Kiel here, who heads up a worker culture program from southeastern Iowa, and who, in fact, is celebrating the fact of diversity in the workplace. And has gone into our schools, who is dealing with the issues of sexism in the workplace, and racism, and violence in domestic situations, and everything else. But quite frankly, what we have to do is to join together to do that. And I don't think that we're here just to talk. We're here to join together. And it's time that we start doing it.
Okay. I want to take an audience comment.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, a good call to action, since we are talking about call to action, a good place would be to start is to remove the Albert Pike statue that stands in Judiciary Square in Washington, DC. Albert Pike was a founder of the Knights of the Ku Klux Klan. The statue's been there for 91-some years. So how can we talk about ending racism when we got a statue in Washington, DC that honors a Ku Klux Klan member and a Confederate soldier? And so I think a good place to start, and I would challenge the people on the stage, if you want to talk about ending racism in this country, because it's the mindset. That's what we're talking about. We're talking about the mindset that's in Washington, DC that filters down to a local level of racism. Anytime you've got a statue that's been there 91 years that represents a Ku Klux Klan member and the founder of the Scottish Rite Freemasons Southern Jurisdiction, if you have that there, how can you talk about ending racism here in Iowa when it starts in Washington, DC? So I want to encourage the people on the stage to get involved, and let's bring down the Albert Pike statue, which would be a good place to start.
Okay. Thank you for your comment. Yes, Judy?
Lieutenant Governor is exactly right. I'm on that committee with her. We've been working very hard for a year on developing this program and many others. We're going to continue. We've made a commitment to each other to continue this fight against racism. One thing I'd like to further, though, not only do we have to start developing our work together within our communities, we have to call back upon the Lieutenant Governor and the Governor and the President of this country for them to start working from their level as well. Because we, as a community, cannot do all the work. The power is in the government levels, such as Lieutenant Governor and the Governor of Iowa. And we need to call on them to work beside us. Not above us, but beside us. As a community of the state, not just on the town level as a community. It's the only way we're going to get things changed. We're talking about, Ms. Ritchie spoke about the study that has been done on the way things with racism going on in the criminal justice system. It's a good study. I'm glad to see it. We all knew it already, what the results were going to be. My question is, what's going to be done with it? We had a great study on a task force on hate crimes. Hate crimes are not being applied in situations when crimes are being perpetrated. We need that to be issued. We need it to be charged against individuals that are doing hate crimes against our groups. We need to fight for that.
I agree about the enforcement of hate crimes. And I agree that we need enforcement on the books, because otherwise, we're perpetrating fraud to the Iowa public, to the American public, if we say we don't want discrimination in society, and we end up not enforcing the laws. But in the same token, I also agree with some of the people that have talked about, we just can't talk about it anymore. You know, I reflect upon candidates. And I reflect positively upon President Clinton, who was one of the first candidates that I know about at a national level, was willing to campaign on the issue of diversity. And he was willing to affirmatively step up and say, we want to have a more diverse populace. And we need to see that at all levels, at least within the government elected officials, is that people should say, let us campaign on issues of racial and cultural diversity. And let us make public stance against this. But we need to say it's wrong. If you see someone driving on the wrong side of the street, you don't even have to wait for law enforcement to pull over that person. The public will do something about it. You're driving your car on the wrong side of the street. The same sort of action has to be taken where you see something that's racist, or sexist, or discriminates on religion, or culture, or race, or age. The same sort of just reaction. It's wrong. You're driving a car on the wrong side of the street. It's wrong. What you've done is discriminates against religion or something. And I think that's what you have to do.
Thank you.
I think one of the things that, I agree with him in that there's something wrong, it should be pointed out. But the problem is, the officials in charge need to recognize that also, and not overlook that. In terms of what we ought to do, is like this Lieutenant Governor here has a good committee. But in my area of the state, northwest Iowa, we have things going on. I've never heard of this committee, okay? I don't think they ever heard of what we're happening in Sioux City, Iowa. So I think, there's some problem here in terms of communication between what is happening around this state and some areas being left out totally, because somehow we fell off the end of the world. And I think that's a problem in the state of Iowa. Iowa has to be a full state. The state lines do not drop off after West Des Moines. Okay? We need help in western Iowa, and we need it now. And we need these things. We need this committee to come across and look at some of the issues that are facing us in Sioux City, Iowa. In western Iowa.
Okay. Thank you.
I think that many of the problems that I've experienced in Iowa, and I came from the South. And if I compare the South to Iowa, Iowa, to me, is a lot worse off than the South. In many ways. Because in the South, people are honest with you about, at least you have that environment where people are honest with you and will tell you exactly what they feel. Even two black people or two white people can get together and say, I don't like you. Say, fine, you know, I don't love you either. I don't have any love in my heart for you either. We can talk about this situation. In Iowa, they smile at you. They smile at you and stab you in the back. They're stabbing you the whole time, they're smiling at you. It's just that I've survived because I don't let smiles fool me. I know enemies smile, too. Now, the issue that I want, you know, I like to think that you could talk to someone when you have a problem and expect them to be cooperative. But, and this is a situation that I didn't want to bring up. I'm going to bring this situation up, because this happened to be females in this situation. Now, see, I have to be very careful to say that I will trust a female and disregard her race. I can't do that. You're asking me to commit suicide, to ask me to do that. And to bring it home to you, this is a situation that happened a couple of weeks ago, that in a meeting, which was, everybody was white except two people. And the speaker and the group went down and sat with their backs to the audience, just as my back is to the people behind me. And I was thinking that the people who were behind me or sitting beside me, since they were all-white females, would say, something is wrong with this situation. And sit there, so that that would force the speaker and other people to come back to the task of addressing and facing us. But they didn't. One by one, each one of those white women got up and went down to the front and sat with their backs to the rest of the people.
Shawnee, I hate to interrupt, but I-
We're taking another break now to add in a story that was omitted from our original program. This feature focuses on culture, the reflection of what a society is. On that front, racism affects our definition of who we are, and how we define ourselves affects racism. This story was produced by Joseph Castell.
I'm Joseph Castell, a Latino video artist and writer from Davenport, Iowa. And for this segment on culture, I've chose to interview artists and activists. For us, culture is a nebulous thing to talk about, because our society is set up to mask who we really are. In the United States, almost all people of alternative cultures are discriminated against if they maintain their traditional values. Our society is set up for assimilation. And for people of color, the irony comes when we forsake our traditional values for equality. And then we end up facing racism that's based on our physical appearances. So if cultural and racial pride are not instilled in young people of color, assimilation can easily lead to what is known as internalized racism, a form of self-hatred. The people I've interviewed realize that if we do not understand our histories, we are subjecting ourselves to not only internalized racism, but cultural deprivation. But through our artwork and our activism, we can infuse our communities with a sense of racial pride and preservation of cultural alternatives for the future. Two World Art Gallery in Des Moines specializes in African-American art and serves as a creative outlet for artists who decide to work outside the mainstream. Floyd Shepherd is co-owner of that gallery.
I think we paint from what we feel and what is happening to us in our daily lives. And with all that intensity of what comes out of the African-American community and what makes it African-American art. White-stream America can't paint with that type of intensity. I think that what happened to us was devastating. It ripped people off from their motherland, take away their name, their identity, their culture, and everything. It's rip it right down the middle. No other race of people has had that done to them. And you know, the pain right now is still as powerful as the actual experience. The pain, young African-Americans feel to this day, I feel the same way. The pain is still as powerful as the actual experience.
We're like in a room with no doors, no way to get out. Education won't help you, because unless they want you in the system, you won't get in. Just, it all depends on whether you can fit in. Maybe the lighter your skin is, the better chance you'll have of getting through the system.
Does your art reflect that?
Yeah. Sometimes I used to spray paint stuff.
Like what?
Like I'd have to do my name, or draw pictures of gangs, or like people that have, you know, I'm not objecting to gangs. If they were all the same gang, maybe I, you know, think it would better. Because trying to get an identity, if you don't have an identity, you do your best to establish one. That's like your feet on a wall. If that's a person that has an identity, he's going through identity crisis, and to establish his identity, he'll let everybody know who he is. So that way, he can gain some kind of respect.
Shi Pong Lin is a Taiwanese graduate student studying multimedia at the University of Iowa.
How I was raised by my parents was, they wanted us to fit in. And they wanted us to, you know, not have an accent and to speak eloquently the way other Americans or other, you know, Anglos did. And they thought that if they taught us a lot about our cultural heritage, that it would impede us in being able to get along with everybody. So most of my life, I haven't really had a sense of pride about who I am. Working on films and, you know, working on putting out my art that really got me to look at how I was dealing with race. I had a child just eight months ago. And it's brought up all kinds of things with my parents. They've changed in how they think about how they raised us. They're much more willing to share stories about their own childhood. And they're much more celebratory about their own culture. So a lot of my work now is about my son and, you know, all those kind of relationships. And how do we pass on a culture when we're so divided from the land where we came from?
They are bothered by these games, Nintendo, Mario Brothers, Game Boy, and so forth. That seems to be an obsession for them, as well as sports, and tennis shoes, and the like. But, you know, you really can't blame them, because the American media thrust this stuff upon them. But as they are presented with these things, and ideals, and novelties, they begin to lose who they are, their identity, and so forth. While they are supposedly in a bilingual, bicultural curriculum, it is a near failure. The English language, which I'm speaking right now, is not our language. It basically was forced down our throats when the encroachment of America began. And so if you're largely communicating the English language, you have been basically dominated. You have been defeated. And my goal is to speak both languages fluently, and to write in both. The main reason why Miskoaki people are very secretive is the fact that if you share some aspects of your culture, the idea is that you're giving yourself away. So if you go to the American public and share information that is quite religious, you are actually letting your religion go. And so that's the main impetus, why the Miskoaki people would like to remain by themselves. And it's a very good philosophy.
The Gannett Corporation, which owns a Press Citizen newspaper in Iowa City, believes diversity is good for business and is aggressive in hiring people of color. Don Flores is the publisher for The Citizen.
I think that when you bring in somebody who has a different background, a different orientation, what they bring is a perspective to stories they may write, or maybe to who they're going to sell an advertising piece to. I think they bring a sense of sensitivity that otherwise would be lost in your newsroom or your workplace. Even if just their presence raises our level of awareness, it's a significant contribution to both the bottom line, because we think diversity is good business.
I think part of the fallacy of the diversity in public discourse is that diversity is about access. It's not about access. You know, you need a radical transformation of the politics of the media. It's not having a brown face, or a yellow face, or a red face, being the president of a major mainstream television company, broadcasting company. It's not just about that. It's about the whole politics of representation that we were talking about. So it doesn't matter that we have access. It's not about access.
So how can we have true diversity?
True diversity by making radical transformations of the structures of a system that by nature is designed to exclude everybody that doesn't buy the fantasy of assimilation. Because assimilation also is a fantasy. You are never assimilated in a system that by design is not created to have diversity.[1708.33] You are never assimilated in a system that by design is not created to have diversity. It's designed for sameness.
Inga?
Being a former, quote, official in state government, I've heard a lot of discussion about, "We have to rely on the government. We have to look to our governmental leaders." I think the power is in the people and I'm not trying to be flip. First of all, we are the people who elect our leaders. And certainly, we've had a history of not turning out to vote. I think that changed in our past presidential election. I don't think we should wait on the government. And this is kind of ironic coming from me. I have seen that the Iowa Civil Rights Commission, other civil rights commissions around the state and in the country, they can only touch upon a few, in a scheme of things, individual cases. We're talking about a massive change that has to occur. And so you can't rely on the government to solve all the ills. It takes different approaches by various folks. Some, you can, you can, you can make a change through purchasing power. That's been used. If you know that there's a business that you have identified that does not support the community or support the concepts or racial justice, then show, demonstrate your power through purchasing power is one example. Another example is working with community organizations that promote racial justice. Get involved in those organizations. Identify, identify organizations that maybe do not and are destructive in the community. Don't look to the government to answer, and remedy the ills that we see. I think we have to rely on ourselves. And as Lieutenant Governor Corning said, get involved in your community. Start organizations and start a dialogue.
Okay, thank you. Yes?
I'm sorry the time running out. I now have authority to express my feeling. I came to this country 10 years ago with fear. Fear of racism in this country. And I came with fear. But in order to overcome the fear, I think that, you know, a lot of things to do with our attitude. Our attitude toward people. If you treat people well, then they treat you well. So I think that, you know, we need to watch our attitude and also teach our children the attitude toward people. And if you do that, then I think that you can overcome the racism. And also, we work together, as I said earlier, that we fear because we don't know who's going to protect you if you take action. So I think we need to come together as a whole and work together. Look at the garden. If you see only one flower bloom, what's it look like? We are here with all ethnic minority. And I think that if every flower is bloomed together, the garden look better.
A beautiful bouquet. Yes?
I like to defend Iowa from the south because my teacher, alright, for one thing, in my school, we have the, a committee called the Multicultural and Non-Sexist Committee. And we do a lot of things in our committee, and that's in Iowa. Another thing, my teacher told me that the Confederates, I mean, the South still call the war, the Civil War, the war between the states. That's a subtle term. What it really was, was the Civil War. That's why the North and the South both have racism problems. It's not higher in one area, part of the country, or the other.
I don't think actually that she was saying so much that, but I think it's a point of not, we recognize that there are clearly points at which in Iowa, we still have these issues and we need to address them. And it seems that for people, there had been a presumption that in the North, there wasn't the kind of racism that there was in the South. And so what do we do in Iowa to work on those things? Is I think the point she was trying to make. If you don't have anything, that's fine. Okay. Yes, Donald?
On racism, we know that we're standing at the water's edge. That we either go in or we stay out. The American Indian knows this. That's why we have been silent for all these years. Where I come from, we isolate ourselves for a while and build our esteem up so we can face it. Iowa is a racist state in so many ways. It covers all aspects in education, economics, justice, and all kinds of diversity that arrived in Iowa. We have hired people in our new enterprise, the casino. What is the difference between us and the white man? The white man looks at our skin. We look at the business that we're in and we hire white people. And most of our employees are white people. So the water's edge is what I'm talking about. That sooner or later, we're going to have to realize that we, that it is within us at all times until we get rid of it in our minds. So I like your comments and that's all I'm going to say tonight because there is so much more to say.
I think I look at this at kind of a different level. I know everybody says they're of somebody, but see, what I see is, it's about acceptance. And we have to teach acceptance. I cannot, because even in my own group of people, there are prejudice between people and who's here and here, and that's every culture in here. And so I think we need to talk about acceptance and we need to start right in our each and own group first, you know, because if you discriminate against anybody, sex, gender, color, race, whatever, you're promoting the very thing that you're fighting to stop. And so to me, it's about acceptance and, you know, it goes way past racism and a lot of other things. It's, you know, we need to accept each of us for what we have to offer and give to this society and work together. And that's at status, at class, you know, just across the line. You know, to me, it all boils down to teaching our kids acceptance.
Lionel?
Well, I just wanted to comment and follow up on what Inga said. The general public has to get involved in their own communities with regard to the question of bigotry or racism. There's no way around it. You know, trying to resolve the question or the issue of racism or bigotry in the United States is like trying to solve the national debt. I don't think it's going to be done in the near future and I don't think racism or bigotry is ever going to be overcome or accomplished because it's a mindset that's already been talked about. But what I see in my community, and it's a small minority community that we have in Mason City, is that we don't have those folks getting out to the schools, getting out to the polls, getting out, doing things and doing them actively. And I would suggest that's probably what's happening in a lot of other communities in the state of Iowa where there are minorities and that they're not also getting out. So, you know, you can't depend on government to do it. The report on the, from the criminal justice system is not going to have anything done with it until the people in the state of Iowa and in their own respective communities get out and push to have something done to correct it.
Okay, thank you. Yes?
I think, I think we have to go back to where we started from. We can talk about forming committees. We can talk about doing a lot of things. But until we re-educate society and the masses of people, any committee that we have will not work. We've been forming committees since the, as a gentleman mentioned, the Civil War. We've been forming committees during Dr. King, during Malcolm. We formed committees. When are we going to deal with the preconditioning that we all deal with every day? When we talk about education, I like the analogy about if you see someone driving down the wrong side of the street, that's because you studied the handbook of driving. But there's no handbook on racism. All right? So we have to do that. We have to go back and go to the extreme of dealing with racism, starting in the school system, starting with the police department, starting with different communities. In Germany, they were able to deal racism because the majority of the community, the white community, came out in protest. When Lincoln High School had an incident and a young man got on television that night and spoke about, "We don't want blacks on this side of town," no one in the white community spoke out. There was no organizing. There was nothing there. We have to quit depending on other people of color quickly. The flower garden, I think is wonderful. But if you take some of the flowers and you don't nurture them, then you have some stunted flowers. Yeah, all right? And there's a lot of nurturing that has never been done. We have to go back with black folk and understand, we're dealing with cultural continuity. There's a difference between me and you. You know, no one took away your language, no one took away your culture. We have to go back also and deal with design. What is actually happening and what is actually by design? We deal, and one more time, real quickly, that we deal with a serious problem in the black community with our young people, you know, and we try to re-educate them. But they don't have guns. They don't have ships to bring the guns in. We can stop a Cuban cigar from coming in this country, but we can't stop crack cocaine. You know, we have some problems to deal with with re-education and that's where we have to get back to what the man said, the root. If you form a committee and don't do the root, then all you have is the same mindset and we'll be here another 20 years with our children talking about, "What can we do?"
Okay, thank you.
And then, I agree with the gentleman that just finished. We cannot stop racism. It is something that, as we were talking about, the root. We can form all kinds of committees and whatever we have, but we have to do it within ourselves because the majority society, there is a majority society that is racism and we are the minority. And whatever we do, it's going to be very minimal. It should come from the top. If the administration at the top condones racism and cross-burning and whatever, then everyone else is going to do it. And I don't know if you've noticed, but the thing that's happened in the last 10 years, what we had already built up, affirmative action and our civil rights laws and all that, that has all deteriorated. So we're regressing instead of progressing. And I hope that we can make a change.
Okay, thank you.
I have to agree with the lady over here about regressing. I'm from Illinois and for over two years, we have tried to establish an Indian Leaders' Advisory Council like there is in Iowa. We have yet to establish a statewide-recognized Indian Advisory Council. I had to go to Senator Simon, he's on the Select Indian Affairs Committee, to get a letter of support from him to send to Governor Edgar's office. And we haven't gotten it established yet.
I have to somehow say something differently here. I came about 15, 16 years ago believing in the American system. And I still believe in the American system. The American system, we have the vision of justice and compassion. But I hope that we still have the belief in our heart. Otherwise, we will be hypocrite. And in what way we're going to come to, and to make that vision of justice and compassion and equality into reality is up to us. It's starting in us, myself, beginning by me and then go on from there. And I cannot push this person, ask that person to change. You have to change yourself. You have to ask yourself, "Am I racist? If I'm racist, then I should change because if I don't change, then my world will change for me. Maybe I'm in the majority today. In the year 2000, you will be minority. And then what can happen to you?" So that's what you need to think in your mind and what you have in your heart. We have to change to pose you can survive in this world. That's all I-
We've said so many different things.
So ended the town meeting on racism, but the process of healing goes on as we continue to reach out to one another again and again, generation after generation. It may never be easy. We hold dear the values we were taught as children, for we learn them from the people we love. Questioning and changing those values can affect our relationships with the people we hold most dear. But if those values cause us to limit others and ourselves, then we must change and it can be done. As we work to get along and work together with all kinds of people, and we must, we need to look for new ways to respect one another and live out the golden rule. If you take nothing else with you from this program, we hope you have learned that while we seek to acknowledge, understand, and value our differences, in fact, far more unites us than divides us. We must hold to that, for we are all human beings. That is our common bond. The great irony is that in being human, we have the capacity to both hurt and to heal. Our challenge is to heal more than hurt. Please continue the dialogue with your families, your neighbors, your schoolmates, your coworkers, with your fellow worshippers, even with the folks at the coffee shop. Thank you.
Major funding for this program was provided by Friends of Iowa Public Television.